Order please. I'll start off by reading the commission rules and procedures before we get started. Plan and zoning commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans. Commission's decision to approve or deny a site plan is the final decision by the city unless the applicant appeals to the city council. Please contact the city clerk or community development department staff for details on council hearings. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then oponents are then allowed to speak with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. Hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the issue under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will not and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The city of Des Moines, please provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourage participation in city government to better serve you. When possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at (515) 283-4209. Should special accommodations be required, assistive listening devices are available for meetings in the council chambers. Plan and zoning commission meetings are broadcast on MediaCom Channel 7. For customers with that service, broadcast is also streamed live in real time on the city of Des Moines website at www.dmgov.org. Click on watch live link. I have one thing that I'd like to do before we get the meeting started. We have a new member, Vicki Stogdill, to my right. I'd like to welcome her and she'll have fun.
Thank you.
She doesn't have to sing a song. She has to dance. No, I'm kidding. First thing we'll do is I'll accept a motion on the minutes, please. Joanne, moved? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Unanimous. Pardon?
I'm abstaining because I was here.
Yeah, she wasn't here. Okay, we'll get on to the consent items and we have right now three items, one, two, and three, and I'll go through them and then we might add another one, but we'll see. The first one is the request from MDI Limited Partnership, number 86, 1440 Walnut Street, represented by Lawrence Olson, for vacation of the subsurface of 129-foot-by-12-foot segment of Walnut Street adjoining the subject property. Anyone here want to hear that or is it okay on consent? It's like it's okay on consent. Commission? Okay. Number two, request from EP Company LLC, represented by Philip Ebert, for review and approval of a site plan under design guidelines for extension of parking into a residential district where it would otherwise be prohibited on property located at 1740 East University Avenue to allow eight parking spaces and loading access for use in the C1 neighborhood retail commercial district to be constructed in the adjoining R2A general residential district. Anyone here against that item? Commission? Okay. Item three, request from Wrench and Go, represented by John Hoffing, for review and approval of a site plan under design guidelines for vehicle display on property at 2233 Maury Street to allow use of a 4,000-square-foot area of the existing salvage yard for vehicle display as part of a dealership license. Subject property is owned by Maury Street Company. Anyone in the audience against that one? Okay, commission? And I think we'd like to also add item five to that unless there's somebody in the audience who's against it. Okay, I'll read item five, request from Julie Bassman, re-zoned property located at 1228 Second Avenue. The subject property is owned by Jerome Bassman. I think that's all, so...
How about seven?
Pardon? Number four, we're going to hear. And what number?
Seven.
Number seven? CJ wants that one left. Okay, so we're going to hear the rest. So I need a motion on item five to move it to consent. Tim moves it. Okay, so we have items one, two, three, and five on the consent agenda. Someone want to move that? Joanne moving consent. So any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign? Unanimous. So we're through with one, two, three, and five. So if you're here for those, unless you want to stay for the show, you can go. So item four, must be you, Eric?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Eric Lindy, senior city planner. This is item four, Jose Zambrano, for property located at 2001-2009 Clark Street and 1510 ML King Parkway, ML King Junior Parkway. So there's three parcels in here that are part of the request. These are parcels that are that were actually rezoned not that long ago in 2005 from C0 to C1 to allow for a tortilla bakery at that time. And it had the limitations as indicated in the staff report. At that time, any commercial development had to comply with site plan. The unused drive approaches had to be removed and the curb restored and then any development shall be performed in compliance with permits in an occupancy. Now, they never did obtain occupancy and the use moved out of there and it's been vacant or did not has not had an occupancy in the eyes of the city since that point in time. There have been some enforcements on the property over those years since 2002. Primarily, there's been storage of vehicles not on a paved surface. And I have another area that might be a little more effective in showing what I'm talking about. So this area, they did get an approved site plan, but they never built to the site plan to fill out the parking area. And so over the time it was being used, they were using it without having paved surfaces for the storage of vehicles and so forth. Now the applicant's asking to come forward and use this property for general motor vehicle repair. That requires a C2 zoning, which is the next notch up again from C1. They would also have to then also modify the building in accordance with building codes to meet a change in occupancy of the building from anything that it's been previously in terms of legitimate occupancy recorded at the city. The building, the primary building on the site is built to the corner. This is looking at it from the south on Clark Street, looking to the north. This is kind of at the southwest corner, looking to the northeast at the fenced yard to the west of the building. And so you can see the building there on the right. This is more directly north. And then there's a house immediately to the west and then there's houses to the north across the alley. This is just a little different perspective of that. The site plan that had been approved and will be something similar to what would be expected if the building is rezoned for this use, there was a parking area that was shown here to the building, kind of a loading section and landscaping that were never really installed or provided to get the full occupancy status for that previous use. So you would, if this is rezoned, it would take something of that nature in a site plan to be able to proceed with their use, even with rezoning.
Sir, that would be an administrative site plan?
Yeah, we would review that administratively under our site plan policies. There wouldn't be anything about it that would necessarily require it to come back to P&Z. The other thing that you should know is the item would also require a modification to the future land use plan for the city. Right now, it's a commercial designation that's pedestrian-oriented or neighborhood-level-oriented. The C2 zoning district is more of a highway commercial type use and would, in order to rezone to C2, it would have to be more auto-oriented type future land use to find it in conformance. So the first two items on your agenda are whether it conforms and then second, a request to amend it so that it could be found in conformance. In this case, staff has looked at the surrounding neighborhood area, the proximity of residential. And we're just not comfortable with introducing the impacts of a highway commercial level use, set of uses on this property that come with the C2 zoning. Even if you limit it down, I think that the uses are too intensive that would be left. Should this be denied, one of the alternatives that the owner and the applicant would have would be to seek a use variance, which if they could demonstrate that the only viable way to use this property would be to convert it for this purpose, they could look to a use variance. And so that would be another remedy. So by denying this zoning, they still have a remedy to be able to do this use. Right now, staff is recommending that the commission find that the rezoning is not in conformance with the future land use designation in the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan. Furthermore, we recommend denial of the requested amendment to go to an auto-oriented, commercial, small-scale strip development. And then based on that, we recommend denial of the zoning because it wouldn't be found in conformance.
Eric, just really quickly from your points. Could you, zoning runs with the land of the property, just as a reminder. So you change that zoning, there are a lot of other C2 uses that are permitted and that are highway-oriented uses also that could be permitted on the property. One of the benefits of the use variance, if that were pursued by the applicant, is that we have been able to put a sunset on that variance or that use of a property. So if it ceased, then only uses under the current C1 zoning would be allowed on the property and not other C2 uses. So that's one of the reasons why on some of these we've recommended denial of the zoning, but then left the door open for consideration of a use variance on a property.
The other thing is that the use, the use variance cannot be requested. They couldn't have done that first. They had to come through this exercise to seek rezoning before being able to even entertain the idea of requesting a use variance. So this is their first step and the first remedy they have in seeking the use that they are wanting.
Any questions for Eric?
I think we understand what the applicant's thinking.
Well, we've met with them in the pre-application process and described these paths for them. I guess I can attest to their full understanding of it. They've been provided the staff report in advance and I'm sure that they don't agree with it, seeking the rezoning, and we're recommending denial, so.
CJ?
Do we have any neighborhood input on this or is it just staff?
We did not receive any direct communication from the neighborhoods that were affected. The only card we got was the one that was passed around.
Anything else for Eric?
I had one question, Eric. There were a couple of underground tanks. They look like they were dry storage tanks. I'm thinking they may date back to flour and cornmeal days. Are they empty? Is there nothing in them?
You might ask the applicant in the pre-app. It was our understanding that those would be, that one of them might be removed soon and that the other one, they thought they were going to just salvage. So if they were able to follow through with this conversion of the property to a motor vehicle repair.
Anything else for Eric? Okay, thank you. Will the applicant come up and explain to us?
I'm going to remember the applicant.
Give us your name, address, please.
My name's Saul Gonzalez, 1314 Fourth Street, Des Moines, Iowa. He's applicant. He had, he wants to submit a site plan. He had got one made. I don't know if he...
He said, "Please tell us."
Okay, he already submitted it. Me and my dad were the previous owners of this property and we had a business there. We weren't able to get the funding to follow through with the site plan that we had. So we just ceased all, you know, everything that was going on there. And this person here has written the property off my dad and he wants to open up a business there. And he's willing to do, comply with whatever you guys ask of him to, you know, follow through with whatever it is that you ask him, basically.
Jackie?
This is Mr. Jose Zambrano.
Is he planning on purchasing the building or is he going to continue leasing?
I think he's going to purchase it if...
It works out.
Yeah.
Does he understand that there might be just kind of a hiccup along the way like this or asking for denial? However, what they're saying is you'll go in front of the board of adjustment and explain what they're doing.
Yeah.
Because if we change the status of this property, we'll have to look at all the statuses that are changed around the city. So I just don't want him to walk away with his head held, though, like Eric said, it's just, it's just another, it's just a hiccup.
Yeah. It took us a long time to get it to C1, so, I mean, I know the process. I know.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Any other questions?
Yeah, most. I mean, he just, basically, he says he's willing to comply with whatever, whatever the city asks for him to do.
He says he has a plan, but he wants to follow your guys' specifications, you know?
Okay. And again, tell him that this commission will actually will deny him, but he will go in front of the other commission that will be available to do that.
Same process.
Unless we don't. I'm sorry, thank you.
If he wants to know why it was denied to begin with.
Haven't yet.
I'll tackle that one.
Okay.
You have to, you have to come here to the plan and zoning commission. That's a zoning issue. And because his use requires C2, we look at, and that zoning would go with the property. And C2 allows a lot of things that we might not like. Staff has recommended that we deny it. We haven't voted on it yet, but if we would agree with staff, that's what would happen. And in our process, we have to do that before you can take it to the board of adjustment. The board of adjustment has the ability to issue a use variance, which would allow the zoning to stay C1, so, but it would be specific for him. And yes, it's another thing to do, but it's what we have set up to protect everybody. Is that okay?
Yeah, I understood.
Play it to him?
Yeah.
The commission makes a recommendation to our city council. The council would have to decide whether to approve or deny the zoning and then the application can be made to a board of adjustment if necessary.
All right. So when will we know your decision, basically?
Commission? We're going to, once you're done, we'll find out if there's anybody to speak on it. Close the public hearing. If we get a motion one way or another, you'll know then. Then it goes on to council.
Okay, all right.
Okay? So you'll know tonight.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. One more question. Go ahead, Joanne.
Does, does he realize that with the Z2 zoning, it does require a lot more funds? I mean, there is landscaping and all of that that goes wrong with Z2.
That's what he's submitting in his site plan. I mean, he's submitting...
And he's aware of that and is, okay, great.
He's aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone in the audience to speak in favor of this? Anyone against? I'm going to close the public hearing and I'll accept a motion. Jack's moving staff. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll vote. Those in favor of Jack's motion, which is denial.
Yeah.
One, we have to do one and then two and three together? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so it's A first. Those in favor of Jack's motion, which is not in conformance, raise your right hand. Opposed? Same sign? Unanimous? Okay, now B and C together, and again, that's not to rezone, to deny the rezoning.
Comp plan and...
Yeah, both comp plan and zoning. Those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Same sign? Unanimous. So it's been denied. Eric, if you explain what's next. When's council meeting?
The, if you, if you want to know, call me tomorrow.
We're done with five because that was consent. We'll move on to item number six. Eric?
Okay, item six is brownstones on Grand and this is a request to amend the site plan to change the elevations for, to allow pergola structures on the rooftop. This is the location at Second Avenue, Grand Avenue on the entire block. We tried to lighten up these pictures as much as possible, but what brought this to the attention is the pergola structure here on the Second Avenue side that projects over the, from the front of the stair egress portion of the rooftop. Basically, although it didn't necessarily require a building permit, it was enough of a modification, if this was done on every unit, that it changes the elevation of the building. So that's why it was determined that they need to come through this amendment process. There was actually also another pergola that was built on one of the earlier units that fronts the Third Street side. And this is not, this doesn't project as far out and the placement of the roof egresses is at a little different location on the, on the building. So it's somewhat different in the way it's applied. This is another photo of the one on Second from a more directly below perspective. There's two elevations or two designs that are basically being proposed for allowance on any of the units, basically. This smaller example is the one like you saw in this photo where it's being built off the back of the unit. It's toward the back and away from projecting to the front facade.
Can we pass those photos around?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then this is a larger 11, basically a 12 by 12, that would be allowed on the front sides of the units. It would be the example that you see in this and I believe, my understanding is that one would get scaled back from what it is, Mike, or is that, would that be able to?
The recommendation is rather than allowing the pergola to extend all the way to the front edge of the building, it would extend no further than two foot to the distance from the stairwell and the house. So it would, would step back, so that, we're going to make sure that...
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
The existing pergola on this building would have to be scaled back to about seven feet, I think, back from where it is now.
Can you zoom that over there?
Um, maybe. I didn't want to say for sure because I wasn't quite sure. It gets pretty grainy after you...
Right. There were some structural reasons why that was constructed as it was. The posts for the pergola actually tie in directly with the railing on the front edge of the roof. But our contractor felt that it would be better to, there to scale that back from the front edge. I think the other point that, just as a reminder, with this, the first phase was built, there were three-story units on Grand Avenue. They came back and altered their plan to go to two-story units. There was some consternation on the commission about going to two-story units on the remainder of development. Phase two was built, which was kind of the buildings along Third Avenue and Watson Powell Junior Parkway. And then phase three came in, that amendment for phase two was made on the commission. It would still be two-story units along Second Avenue. Then another amendment came through and they asked for two-story units on Second Avenue. And there was quite a bit of debate about the architecture of these, of these structures at that time. I think the product has been, it's clearly been more received by the buyers if it's not built quickly. I think we should look up over it in the area and really the question is just where that... Pergola should extend. Quite honestly, it gives a, almost a third story to the building, so staff did not really have an issue with the request other than stepping it back.
I have a question. Does, is this an option of each owner, whether they want a pergola or not?
Yeah, that's my understanding and you might ask the applicant what their procedure is when they build out a unit, how that, if, what their involvement is in that.
It's my understanding it's an option, but that's why we wanted to verify design, these two alternatives. So if anyone that's built has to match one of the two designs that was shown.
And then, Eric, a question about the picture. We're looking up. It looks like it's a solid ceiling to the pergola structure as opposed to the light through the pergola. Is that just a... Is that just an oddity of this view, or is...
It might be, or I don't know if it was...
I may have an explanation for that. I saw one of these a few weeks ago. They use kind of a shade like this, retractable shade that, that goes across to...
Right. Thank you. Anything else for Eric?
What's that?
Anything else for Eric?
Oh. Yeah, I just wanted to mention, we're recommending approval, but we do want to make sure we coordinate with the developer to finalize those documents to reflect that design, so that when we get future requests, we have something to provide them.
Anything else? Thank you, Eric. You're up.
Steve Neber with Hubbell Realty Company, 6900 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa. I'll try to remember the questions and answer them. First, it is an option for the owners, and the reason we're here now is this didn't really come up as a strong interest or an option from owners until after we'd gone through with that third phase along Second. That's kind of why. And it's been popular. Please report that the project is sold out. It's been well received. Two of the units along Second Avenue are sold contingent on having a pergola. It's been selected by two of those buyers, so, Unit 301, and I think Unit 311, and I think the gentleman's even here, so. So it is an option. There is no mesh on the bottom of, just to clarify, that's an open lattice work, so I don't know what the picture, there, what we're proposing will not have mesh. Let me put it that way. We've read staff report, we agree with it. That would require us to modify the one that is up there along Second and pull it back from the roof edge. We'll have to do some things structurally to put, basically penetrate the roof membrane and do some additional reinforcing to make that happen, but we can do that. So we'll modify the one that's up there now, enter an agreement with staff report, so I'm just here to answer any questions that you might have. We've also then, I think, the whole thought behind this was develop really four standard details, four, we got four conditions. We have the, the classic units, which are the ones along Second, the two rows of buildings there, which have basically the same condition. So we would develop the standard detail with staff for those units, that all residents, if they wanted a pergola, would, would follow that. We have the units that are the Riverwalk units, which are along Third and Watson Powell, so we, we have that detail we're working on. We have the ones along Second, Second Avenue, the Capital View units, which we're talking about, the ones out too close to the front. And then we have Unit 301, which is kind of a hybrid unit on the corner that makes the transition, if you remember, is a bigger, larger unit. It actually, its doghouse or roof stairway is turned 90 degrees, so it's kind of a special condition, so that one needs a special drawing, too. But the idea is to standardize, and so whatever they do, all the residents, if they select to do this, and since we're all sold, right now, we only have the two in Capital View and the one in Riverwalk, and then I think there is one in the classic units that wants to have them.
I apologize, I neglected to fill out the one for the one special unit. 301, on the corner. It is, they do have the ability then to be a little bit longer on that because of the orientation.
And it actually, it's, the way it's oriented, its roof patio does not go out to the roof edge. It kind of rotates 90 degrees and goes to the north.
Okay, question. Steve, what, they could be made out of cedar, I don't know.
They will be cedar, that's specified, yes.
And cedar ages and goes gray, and depending upon what people put on it for a seal coat or stain, is there going to be a standard stain, seal coat, maintenance thing, so that they all relatively look alike over time?
The idea was to let them to weather to gray, to keep them as low maintenance as possible, quite honestly.
As far as the staff review goes?
We did look at whether we wanted to require them to paint or somehow stain those a similar color, and we did, we were a little bit concerned about the ongoing maintenance of the paint on there, and so we felt it was better to just leave it natural and let it, let it weather, and I think the color of it actually will blend in with the buildings better.
The maintenance, maintenance of them would be left to the resident, it's not part of the HOA, so the thought was we probably want to have it as maintenance-free as possible, so that there's not a conflict of someone not maintaining it.
Steve, I'm assuming this will be treated lumber, or not?
No, it's cedar. It's cedar.
I'm sorry.
Yep, no, which is, is more expensive than treated, I mean, it's...
The maintenance responsibility rests with the owner of the unit?
As it stands now, unless we amend the covenants in some fashion to make it the HOAs, but since it's, it's an option selected by the owner, I don't know that that'd be fair to all the HOA owners to maintain a, an optioned item, if you will.
My question comes up, I have varying ages of cedar shakes on the outside of my house, and so I know how the graying goes. And then I was at Gilcrest this week looking at stuff, and they have this tech vinyl decking material, and I don't know if it's advanced to the stage of pergola use or not, but I thought that would stay the same color over time. That's all I was thinking of.
It, it doesn't come in a dimension, like a two-by-six, two-by-ten, you can get it in a decking.
Right.
This is actually dimensional lumber, two-by-six, two-by-ten.
I see that.
And there actually has been some problems with that, with mold. In fact, it, we've had problems with the hubbell.
I know you've used it in some of your...
Yep, no, you got to be careful, but the big thing is it didn't come in dimensional lumber.
Any other questions for Steve?
I just have a question. If it's an option by the owner, and several owners do it this year, and then in two years, several more owners, there will be a variance in the color as it ages. Does that make a difference, or does it just kind of mellow together? I know if you add a new part of a cedar fence, you've got a new fence and a faded fence.
That condition could occur, I agree. That you could have some weathered ones, and you could have a new one if someone did one in the future.
Okay.
I don't know if staining it would solve that either, I don't know.
Any other questions?
I assume they can't paint it pink.
No, the, the detail will be, they'll be left to weather, that, yeah, we don't want it to, we want to, the whole idea of this exercise, and why I agreed with, with Mike, that we, we need to standardize the details, is so that going forward, when we're not in control in the HOA, you know, that everyone can be assured that this is how they're going to get built, if they want one of these, and they're not a bunch of different types of styles up there, even though they're not a permitted structure. I mean, that's, they don't require permission, I should say. So this is the only control, if you will, that could be placed on, is to go through the standard details, through the covenants.
I think on the site plan, they have the ability to regulate ongoing, you know, if there become problems with, with one of these parents, I mean, it is a site plan review that's gone to P and Z, so I, I think we still have, maintain the ability to, to review that, and, and over time, if, if something becomes dilapidated, et cetera, we could require a new construction if they, if they're going to have it there.
And, and the covenants would allow the HOA to step in and do something, too.
Anyone here to speak in favor of this item? Come up and speak. Try not to repeat yourselves, please. Give us your name and address.
Rick Flat, 201 Grand, number 201. I'm, I currently don't have a pergola, and, but I do agree that everybody should have the option to do one. I'm not sure that it really matters that they're all the same, because I'm figuring the people that don't have a pergola are going to put a variety of different umbrellas, different types of patio furniture, all that kind of stuff that are just, it's an outdoor living space, and the fact that...